I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special call and meeting for Scott County Board of Education, January 19th. I'd like to just talk about a couple of Zoom etiquette items. For folks who aren't sitting in the room with us, I just want everybody to be aware that we are sitting six feet apart. Therefore, we have taken off our masks and we are on Zoom as well, just so everybody is aware. This is a meeting where there will be discussion amongst the school board members. There is no public comment at this time, just wanted everybody to be aware of that. Number three, I'll go ahead and bring us to discussion. Number three, discussion and possible action for reopening plan for Scott County schools. Do we have a motion, discussion?
You want us to do, are you looking for a motion to start the discussion?
Yes.
So, I've got something prepared that I'll do.
Okay, sure.
So, in this probably will start discussion. All right. I know the staff at Scott County schools go above and beyond in the best of situations, but what I've read, seen on social media, and listened to over the last week or so has given me an even greater sense of pride in what you do. It is abundantly clear that you are working day and night, long hours, to provide the students of Scott County schools with the best education possible under very extraordinary circumstances. Thank you. Thank you to every parent, grandparent, guardian that reached out and voiced your concerns and your thoughts on what the next step in instruction should look like for Scott County schools. As I read your messages, I saw consistency that rang true no matter which side of the debate you land on. The last several months have not been easy, an understatement for sure. Each of you are trying your best to make sure your children continue to receive the education they deserve. I applaud each and every one of you for continuing to face the challenge of educating your children under such trying circumstances. In some cases, you are forced to choose between earning a living or staying at home to make sure your child is getting on his own call. Some of you have been forced to leave your children with family, friends, or in daycare for the day, picking them up, taking them home, providing a meal, and then making sure they complete their schoolwork for that day. And then trying to make sure that they're getting in bed at a time that so they can get up and do the same thing the next day. After much research, hearing from many in our community, discussions with Dr. Hub, and considerable thought, I truly believe that the best things for students in Scott County is to return to a five-day-a-week in-person instruction. So, that's my offer. Can we clap?
Sure.
I could not agree more.
Amen.
I'm right there with you. Thanks, Tom. Thank you to a lot of people, put in a lot of effort, and you dropped through the great tough year, but I think that if I'm struggling to find a government, we shouldn't be in school. I really don't want to start struggling on the board in any different way. I'm like it.
My only thought is that I would love to have those teachers that are willing to be vaccinated. I know that we can't mandate vaccines, you know, we can't specify that, you know, it'd be a requirement. But I would love for those that are willing to be vaccinated to have an opportunity to be vaccinated before we go back. I know there's a lot of discussion of five days a week versus hybrid. I would prefer to do the full schedule versus hybrid. Being a teacher myself in another district, having taught hybrid, even though it was just a short time, it was increasingly difficult. So, I would be in favor of a full schedule versus a hybrid schedule. But I know that if our district can't offer that, then, you know, we more or less just can do it with X-Buy and then get the best for our students. Those are my thoughts on that. And just that we are so close to a vaccine that if we could make that available before we start back, that would be the goal that I would like for us to pursue. And also, just understanding that if we vote to go back, that that doesn't mean that, you know, we're going back tomorrow. We have to give our staff time to prepare and, you know, we need to set a calendar and set a schedule for that, that it's not going to be an automatic plan.
Can I jump in for just a moment? Dr. Hub, I noticed that there was an article in the newspaper where you answered some questions on the vaccine. I don't know that everything is all prepared and ready to roll out, but could you share a little bit with us?
Yeah, you know, on Sunday night, we were able to send out a message to all of our staff because late that afternoon, I talked with Dr. Krista Miller, and she had said that all indications were that we were going to be able to receive the vaccination next week, the week of January 25th. As recently as mid-afternoon, probably today, I got another call back from Dr. Miller, and in Scott County, we have 1,572 staff members that are on the immunization roster that was sent to the state. A great response, we only had 198 that declined the offer to get a vaccine. So, you know, nearly 1,600 are going to get the vaccine if they still choose to do so, and less than 200 refused it. Although all 1,600 doses are not in WECO's possessions right now, they have a large chunk. They believe in each week on Mondays when they get their doses of vaccines, right now it appears that we will move forward with a plan to have that vaccination done all day next Tuesday. Again, you know, the people that are here in live, especially our staff members that we have, some in parents in the crowd, normally, we like to give you all kind of the heads up on the communication plan. I'm sure Renee has a couple of things, once we make some decisions tonight with the board, we'll be able to get that out there. I don't see a way where we can have school during the same day that we are going to be vaccinated. My suggestion is that we use that for a remediation and enrichment day, kind of a catch-up, make-up day, because I'm not even sure, when you figure the way the schedule will look, we will have enough providers that we can do and will do about 200 vaccinations an hour. And there's just no way that we can have staff coverage for 200 in an hour to have any sense of instruction at all. So, it looks like that next Tuesday, the 26th, will be the day when staff in Scott County will be able to get vaccinated. And again, that will, that will be definitive with a press release that we expect out no later than 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, if quite honestly, Renee will be one of my first calls on the way home, and we may send it out. Again, all indications are the way the vaccines have arrived, they've arrived every Monday. Dr. Stack talked with Dr. Miller on Sunday and says you can claim for it, because one of the things that we've been telling our staff, many of our staff, you know, I've had some veteran staff that reach out to me and say, "Hey, Dr. Hub, I know you're a veteran, I'm not sure if you know, but you can get a shot at the VA." Other folks are signing up in Fayette County. And my response to them has been, WECO and Dr. Stack would suggest that you wait and get your Scott County shot so that you don't take a dose designed for somebody else, but ultimately, it's somebody's personal decision, and we're not going to decide that one way or another. But good news, Tuesday, the 26th, we expect to vaccinate all the school staff that are on the immunization roster and school principals, you know, we'll get that plan out. We've had school principals who will share the list, so if anybody has a question on whether or not they're on the list, they can do that. We do think that we are going to be able to have, let's just say, we had 30 of the people that declined in December, because, you know, we're now four weeks later, so we've got four weeks more information, four weeks more firsthand knowledge about people getting a vaccine. If those people that said no in December, if there is the availability of vaccines, there is a potential that they can be added on at the end of the day. So, it's also kind of a bit of good news. And also, of the 1,572 names that are on our list, I think there's going to be a number of those that will say, you know, "I thought more about it, I choose not to get vaccinated, that's just one more dose that can be a one at the end."
Or maybe they went ahead and got it elsewhere.
Well, they got it, well, because I'm fed, yes, great one. I've had several reach out to me and say, "Hey, Dr. Hub, just want to let you know, I already got mine somewhere else." That's a dose for somebody else.
Right. And then with the vaccination that we have, there will be a booster.
There are with all of them. All indications are that that is three weeks later, so we're looking somewhere in that 17th, 18th of February, it'll probably be the next vaccination. And I would expect that the same protocol would be in place, that we would have that as a make-up, catch-up, a make-up, catch-up day, and if we would not have school, we would do the same thing. With 1,600 people, WECO will actually shut their offices down in order to give us the vaccination all in one day. And really, all of us on my team, and certainly, I agree with Dr. Miller, that is the most efficient way to be getting all of our people in. The short story is, we're going to have some type of an alphabetical list, hey, A through C, you come at this chunk, and we think that'll be the best way to manage that. So, yes, vaccination next week, three weeks later, the second shot, and all hopes are that that is like a lot of people have been saying, kind of the beginning of the end. So, it's exciting.
That's great news. Yeah, it's fantastic. Also, so hypothetically, if we return to five days, does that also entail that we'll have after-school, all that will roll out, like for after-school programs, will that be in effect as well?
Those are all school-level decisions, and there are still the state restrictions on some of the after-school programs, but they are allowed to exist. We do have some schools that are still running those programs, even in our kind of truncated schedule where we were back in person in default. So, it is certainly possible that schools will choose to make those available for parents around us.
I know so many people wants to depend on those, and, you know, it would be a blessing to have those.
Kevin?
Well, I think I'm like most everybody else that I'm aware of, everybody wants to get five days a week as soon as we get them there. I also think that it would probably be best to have the vaccine in place, meaning already administered, before you do that. To me, it just kind of would make sense to give your staff as much protection as possible, and then we start school, and we just roll on from there. That jumping back and forth, my fear would be, you're in school for two weeks, then you're out of school again. That is where I see a lot of the problem coming from. So, yeah, I'm all four to five day a week as soon as we get our teachers and staff their vaccine.
Which we're talking about next week.
Exactly. I mean, we went through months of being like we are now. One more week is, like, okay, I can stand one more week, it's as bad as I hate to do it. I can stand one more week of it.
So, you're thinking just through then getting the first dose next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because my understanding, they have a certain amount of antibodies, we'll figure that within two to three days, then, okay.
I'd like to weigh in as well. I am in favor of five day a week for our children, go back to the same schedule that you and your staff implemented before. I think we put that in place in the summer, and we had to boot back, unfortunately.
About a good week's.
Nearly six weeks, and we've got as many days of instruction as any district together.
And I continue throughout the community with friends who I know who are in healthcare and people throughout the community that continue, and I was talking about this again with Dr. Hub yesterday, I get all kinds of comments about what a great job we did, you know, that we didn't see a spread go through our schools. I don't know that the public is necessarily aware, but Dr. Hub and his staff send us numbers every day. They give numbers from the health department to our nurses. They send us out new numbers every single day, what comes in with students or staff in quarantine or that have COVID. So, we watch those numbers, we've got a little tab, tabulation that we click in, and we take a look, and can see all the trends, and we watch all of this very, very closely. So, it's something that we've really paid attention to, and, you know, I'm proud of what we were able to do before and able to do for the kids before, you know, of course, we were told we needed to shut down. So, I'm excited about the vaccination, that just couldn't come at a better time. I mean, that was a blessing in disguise to get that email on Sunday from Dr. Hub. So, I'm thrilled about the vaccination, it makes me feel good for our staff, because we're always worried about our people, you know, and that's always a very important part because, you know, we're a big family, we do a lot for our kids and our community, so. And again, that says a lot for Georgetown too, because now hopefully, we'll have almost 1,600 people who have had vaccinations, so that's exciting news as well, so I'm proud of that fact. So, I am all in favor to go back to, you know, what we were doing, you know, beginning of this year, so that's just.
So, a couple things, let me, I'm sorry, I have numbers.
Doctor, I'm sorry, would it be okay if we just go to whoever's speaking? We're getting a couple of comments about not being able to hear super well.
Are we able to manually do it, or are we?
You should, yes, you should be able to.
I tried to, I could not, it would not let me unmute myself.
So, you want us to mute ourselves?
I need it to unmute.
It's letting you.
Yes, it's letting you.
I can't unmute.
I cannot unmute myself.
Yeah, the three of us can, Billy.
Okay. Dr. Hub, I'll go ahead and.
How about you can't unmute?
Can you unmute yourself now?
No, what you muted, you can't unmute.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Without a delay in our response, I guess.
So, as far as the numbers go, let's talk some specifics that are going to make the case why having kids in person is really what's best for all. The true statement is, we went nearly six weeks of five-day in-person instruction with nearly 7,000 kids in our building. Zero, there were zero cases of transmission where a student or a staff member got it from school. Now, we had athletes on teams that got it, but remember, football players, volleyball players, soccer players who were practicing together without masks, following the protocols, but they got it that way. Coming to school, participating in school, zero cases of transmission. Another piece of data that's also true, when you look at the number of student positive cases, and this does include those student-athlete positive cases, and really, any student positive case regardless of how they got it, when you look at the numbers for the nearly six weeks when we were in-person, and when you look at the nearly eight weeks that we've been virtual, double the number of student positives while we have been all virtual. And I go back to saying that we know for sure that when we are five days in-person, that's eight hours a day, that's a third of a student's day, and we can hold them accountable, we know they're wearing their mask, and we know that they're washing their hands, and they're practicing good safety protocol. Not that families across the community aren't also asking for that, but we know that there are sleepovers, there are daycare issues, there's Xbox playing, there's all kinds of things that are just exacerbating the spread, that it doesn't happen when we're in school. So, you know, it's hard to refute the data that we're not safest when we're in school.
Give me just a second, there's 300 in here now, so I'm trying to.
I'm still muted.
Well, I mean, as soon as she's done, I'll get you. Is that fine?
Well, one option, Billy, is that, and again, that's your pleasure, you know, to share personally, it's possible that we unmute the room and ask for everybody's respectful cooperation, and they get the benefit of probably a less conjuncted conversation, and then very quickly, you know, hey, we're hand-raising, that's, maybe that's not a bad idea that they're for that, but then we may have, you know, what we believe were Eastern European teenagers that hijacked our meeting that one time. If they're here tonight, then we'll know pretty quickly.
We had feedback before anybody was in the room, which was while we went this direction.
Okay.
Well, and obviously, we're going to have to be more official with our comments, so I apologize about that, and that was all timing, but I just follow up what everybody said, I just want to reiterate that everything I've read also indicates the same, that if it gets far outweighed the risk at this point, I think we're heading out of the road to even further mitigate that risk with the vaccine coming into place. And I see no reason, based on everything I've read and heard and seen, that we shouldn't go back to school on Wednesday, but next week. I think it allows us on Monday to wrap up virtual, a Tuesday break, for teachers to be vaccinated, and parents and families to get ready for five-day-a-week. I think the ideal start is a middle week. We look for that every August and every January after a long break, so that our young children particularly can start back on a shorter week to get their schedules reconditioned to that five-day-a-week. And I just can't see a reason why that Wednesday, following a week from tomorrow, doesn't make all sense in the world to start our students practicing on a five-day-a-week schedule.
I would love to, there we go, thank you, Billy. So, at this point, I would like to make a motion that on February 3rd, would that be appropriate, Dr. Hub?
Sure. That's not what Ms. Duncan is saying, I don't think.
No.
I'm just.
I'm saying January 27th.
I'm saying January 27th, I'm saying the day after the staff receives their vaccination, I don't know why we wouldn't start by four. What's the purpose of doing that? The plan was always to start by on the 25th anyway, so if any action, really, everybody's supposed to show up on Monday.
As the teacher for any.
They're receiving a vaccine on the 26th, which is a Tuesday, which is, you know, and I'm saying I don't see why we wouldn't start by Wednesday.
Okay. So, reasoning on Wednesday? Okay.
What are your thoughts logistically with that?
Billy will give you permission here.
You can write your name out.
We can try that and see if the world loses to my.
Just that we can have discussion. Three of us was creating the data, so that's why I was going to just.
But we can try that.
But that was, you know, about thinking about making a motion if I might get the date correct.
I would think we are, I think there's still several discussion points before an emotion, whatever, but there's still.
Yeah, I'm just.
I'm gonna be sticking to my.
Yeah.
Kevin, if you see that I actually don't need to.
Yeah, I'm someone out there as a starting pointer, and someone tell me that doesn't work, and then we may, I might get us in a topic.
Okay.
You are?
I'm here.
Oh, I just got a reminder. I am unmuted.
If I cannot find you, but everybody around you is unmuted, I would think you could project your voice louder. I'll still look for you.
There you go.
So, if you can't laugh in this situation, I'll tell you, I'm just so dang excited here because other than, other than my kids, I've not seen as many kids as I've seen out here. Hey, I'm an educator, I've been an educator for almost 30 years, man, I was fired up, I was walking past three of those, they were coming down the stairs, I was like, awesome, we got students here tonight, I tell you, you know, they've been back there, I said Xbox, and I saw their heads nodding up and down, and now he's blushing because he's getting embarrassed, and nobody knows I'm blocking my keys over there. So, so a couple things. There are lots of reasons why Wednesday makes sense. I will also say that I've had firsthand conversations with people, I know Billy has had conversations with people that have gotten their vaccination, and the day after the vaccination is not a barrel of fun, okay?
That's what I was thinking.
Now, now, that.
That I've had conversations with, I know the reaction.
Sure, right, so, there you go. Also, remember that, that what we don't know about yet is, so, so the short story is, whenever we close before, like when we close for the flu, it's always because we're, we don't have enough staff to operate safely. And when we're thinking about a pandemic, the group, so, so when you think about a hybrid versus five days, in both of those scenarios, we need all of our teachers present all the time. But when you think about a hybrid versus five days, and I'm not advocating a hybrid at all, I'm just kind of laying out some, some thoughts that you can think about. The advantage of a hybrid is that you can set up your transportation plan in such a way that you can have plenty of drivers that are available to sub for those that are out. We have bus drivers that are out because we just have current vacant positions due to retirements and resignations. We have bus drivers that are out because of positive cases. We have bus drivers that are out because of quarantine. We have 67 bus routes, so again, I like to have people thinking that, you know, figure 70 bus drivers. We have all of our mechanics driving, and all of the folks in the bus house, all the staff, they are driving. Those last couple days in November, before we went out for Thanksgiving, we were still running double routes to schools, and that meant that some schools, we were having students arriving late and leaving late, or arriving late and leaving early. I'm just saying, I mean, that is, that is something that my team is prepared, we have solutions on how to handle some of those problems, but with the return to school, the incident rate is still high, right? We're still mid-sixties here in Scott County, and so that incident rate still affects all of us, and that means that there are still going to be positives, and there are still going to be quarantines. It's not happening in school, but with the incident rate so high in the community, they're bringing it in, and the numbers are still there. We, we are asking as much as we can for people to be substitute teachers and substitute days and substitute bus drivers, you know, you and I were talking about today, we got advertisements all over town to be bus drivers. Transportation is the only thing that, that when we enact it, might have to be a little bit different so we can continue to go to school all five days. It remains true that part of the executive order that was issued on December 18th does mandate our requirement to provide accommodations for any of the people over age 65, and also for 55 and older that have a high-risk accommodation. There's another group, those whose doctors would say that you shouldn't take the vaccine. The easiest group that we can think about is our pregnant staff. All of those people are now entitled to a virtual accommodations. Our numbers at this point don't indicate, because we shared all those numbers that we have right now, don't indicate that that's a problem. But, but remember though too, and we had a principals meeting today, and we have always, as a team, believed this to be true, that we have so many staff, and John, I think you really articulated what we all think very much about our staff. A lot of the people who may end up requesting accommodation, they really don't want to, they really don't want to, but at the end of the day, their doctor or their family members are telling them, you know, it's safest for you if you just ask for this accommodation. And at some point, those numbers may dictate what we're able to do or not. And again, so, the two things to think about, that are facts that we will use to determine what we can do, are facts that remain unknown. There is no deadline, we can't enforce a deadline about vaccinations, we can't enforce a deadline on you must request, you know, if we want to come back next Wednesday, 27, we can't say by February 25th, you must request. Now, we've done that already, we did it before Christmas. You all saw the email, you know, there's no retaliation, it's certainly a personal decision, we support, this board has supported what our staff wants to be a high priority since March 13th, when we first started this whole thing. So, but still, we hear from principals that their staff really doesn't, they don't want to put us in a lurch, but they also balance that fine line between what they believe is most safe for them and also safe for those around them. So, those are just some things to think about. I don't, I don't know that it really changes too much of your conversation, I think that ultimately, that ends up being a problem that I solve, but I just. that ends up being a problem that I solve. But I just also want you guys to be thinking that those are factors that our team's considering, too. We do have a lot of staff that wants to come in, but we do still have some staff that's nervous about coming in, and, you know, I don't know, it's seventy-five, twenty-five, and the amount of emails and conversations I'm having, you know, we kind of talk to it, maybe that's the same that we're dealing. So, you all are, I mean, you all are charged with really having a pulse of what the community has to say. You know, we've always said, as the superintendent, I know that I'm insulated from a lot of, a lot of responses, because some people are just, they're not going to reach out and, you know, go way above the chain of command and tell me something. So I rely on what the principals and directors are telling me. And when I, when I said, hey, listen, the board's, the board's making two decisions tonight, really. You're deciding the what, and the format that we're going to return, and then you're deciding the when. Hands all across the room raised for five days per week. Principals are ready, their staffs are ready. It's really our job to handle the logistics. So, we're excited about the opportunity, and we'll roll with whatever we have.
Well, I think give Dr. Hug and the staff a little more buffer time, because a lot of these unknowns he's talking about, you're not going to know until the person sits in the chair and says, I'm not taking this shot, or here's my education letter. All this stuff still is unknown. So, it's going to take a few days after this starts rolling out, before they're going to know which sets of plans they need to go with. And I know Dr. Hug and the rest of the staff has been working diligently on several different plans, depending on how it rolls out and what happens. Well, until they know that, it's kind of hard to throw a dart and say, okay, here you go, we're going to start this tape, because that's what it looks like to me.
The benefit for, real quick, you can now mute, unmute yourselves as you speak, so.
That's why I was pushing for, that's why I was struggling for maybe the first week of February, just to kind of give some buffer time to unwork those kinks, versus, you know, trying to work them out as we go.
But, but the plan was to go back in person Monday, January 25th. I understand that there's still...
Right, that plan, I don't want you to worry, I've been preparing for Monday, 25th.
Yes.
That should have, if the concerns, Dr. Hug, and others share, I mean, are we doing that? You know, concerns about, are we going to be able to maintain the, set of bus routes? And are we going to maintain over the long haul? Are we going to have more teachers that fall into a category where they feel they need to ask for the accommodation? It's going to be hard, no matter when we start. My point just is, whether it's Wednesday, or the following Monday, or the following Monday, or the following Monday, you're really, that's never going to take care of itself. That's something that only time can tell, and until we get rolling, we may not know. And, and we're never going to be in a situation, or even like Dr. Hug had implied with our, with explicit, not even implied, with the bus driver situation, much of it is just separate from COVID altogether. It's just that we've got a shortage of bus drivers. It's a statewide issue. And so, I, I don't know that we can argue that waiting another week or another two weeks in any way corrects any of those problems. It's never going to be an easy start, but like you said, January 25th was always the plan.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Hug, but for the accommodation piece, the executive order, that list of accommodations that's in the executive order, they don't have to tell us until the day we start school. So, if we say Wednesday, January 27th, that's the day they can find, that's the final date for them to say, here's my accommodation, I'm not coming, or I am showing up. Or, if it's February 3rd, same thing, right? They don't have to tell us ahead of time, even though we can ask, but they don't have to tell us.
Yeah, so, so the fact is, they, quite honestly, they wouldn't even have to tell us that first day. We've got a great staff, and, and they know how important it is for us to come up with an efficient system to start for students. So I think most of them are going to let us know as soon as they can reconcile that decision with themselves, and their family, and their faith, and all the different factors that come into play. The benefit about tonight, and, and, you know, those of you that I've, that I've talked to over the weekend, really what's exciting about tonight is that we are, we're drawing a line in the sand. Not, not that that's a negative connotation, it's that we are, we are putting a flag down, we're drawing a line in the sand, saying that we're going to come back at this date. So now, that employee and their family, now they have to take that deep breath and say, okay, now we really do have to decide, are we going to take the accommodation? Is it better? The fact that we're getting a vaccine for many will make that decision easier. Oh, wow, I never dreamed that I would be able to be surrounded by people that had the first dose. It'll be a lot easier to make this decision now. So, so I think that that's, that's a good thing. We'll know, and I, and I'm confident that the majority of our staff knows how important their decision is to us moving forward, and as soon as they come up with that personal decision, are going to let us know.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to fight.
No, no, I know, right.
But the point is that we say...
We're never going to know until we start.
We set the date.
Right.
We set the date.
Then we know.
Then we know. That's the, you know, it's not going to matter if it's...
If we set April 1st, we know the last week of March.
Right.
If we set February 1st, we'll know the last week of January. If we set next Wednesday, we'll know on Wednesday.
I just don't want to go back on the 25th, cancel school on the 26th, and then say, you know, then we have to, we don't have enough teachers show up for the 28th, and it'd be, you know, that roller coaster. So, that was my thought process.
I agree, that's a concern of mine, too. My point just is that I don't know that we can be any more sure of that half, of that, if we're, I don't know that we can be any more sure we're avoiding that that's going to happen by starting on the 27th, as we are April 1st, or as we are March 5th.
Right, and that, and that don't make sense, yeah. It does, it does. But, we're talking about, so now that we're going into this realm of discussion, I guess, on, you know, what day, what, what we possibly look at here, you know, one of the factors that kind of play in for me is, we're talking about vaccinating, really, sixteen hundred people. Lord have mercy, I hope that all happens on Tuesday and it goes off without a hitch. I was talking to Dr. Hug, and we were thinking it might have been another day. Then I got a phone call from him today saying, wait, Diana, looks like we're going to go on this day instead. And, and we all know how this kind of rolls, because that happens to us as a school board all the time. It's like, here we go, here's our best laid plan, and then all of a sudden, because of all the factors at B, we get the phone call, and it's like, hey, we got to move, because this is what just hit our plate. So, so my, my concern would be, best laid plan, Tuesday, we vaccinate, you know, we have the vaccinations go through, and everybody starts showing up the next day. We don't know what sixteen hundred people being vaccinated. Hopefully, everybody got their vaccinations.
Can't we do it all in one day?
Well, I, I, oh, they've got a fabulous plan, it sounds like, in place. But, the, the idea is, what if there was a little glitch there? And now we're prepared to start the next day, but we had a glitch, which we know will happen.
That we cannot control.
And now, here we are, set on those three days. This will give us, in my mind, February 1st, which is a Monday, and I'll just throw this out, and I, I understand what you're saying on Wednesday. February 1st, that gives us those few days to handle anything residual that comes up after having sixteen hundred people in our building going through the, the drill. And then, where are we going to be with our students and our staff, and everybody starts fresh on Monday a few days later? At this point, and trust me, I have a daughter that I want to go in person tomorrow. If we could vote for tomorrow, I would take that right now. I honestly would. Let's just go. I would, I would drop her off tomorrow.
I hear what you're asking for.
No, 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 that's my grandson. I would come drop them off. But, but, I don't think they'd appreciate that. I'm just thinking best laid plans, you know, what can we be prepared for? You and your staff always do a fabulous job with lighting up the what-ifs for us, ten thousand different ways, and I understand that. I want to make this right. We've been waiting for this vaccination since March 13th of last year, and I want to make it right.
A few days of buffer time.
That's my opinion. That's just a few extra days. It gives, it gives our, our staff a couple days to adjust, after getting the thought of having a vaccination going into, you know, into your body. I personally would take it right now, if somebody wanted to give it to me, but, you know, it's, it's everybody's decision, and then that gives everybody a couple days, and then we roll it out. It's a three day difference, but...
What about Thursday? Are we negotiating? I completely understand the point, though. Best laid plans, sixteen hundred people vaccinated in one day is a lot, and it, it almost has to go perfect. You know, even if you build against stuff, you know, it almost has to go, and we're in the middle of a pandemic. So, I get the whole, what if we don't get on, and they have to roll over into Wednesday, and then we, we have one of our buildings set up to have them come in to get the vaccine, so that knocks that building off line, and then those people that still need to get the vaccine. I get that concern.
Doctor, have you spoken with the powers that be at WECO? What is your level of confidence that they, that if they're going to get the vaccine, it chooses when it's going to happen, and if they're, if they're going to be able to get through that in one day?
I believe that's going to happen. So, each, so Dr. Miller describes them as providers. Each provider has a proven track record of doing thirty vaccinations in an hour, and she believes she's going to have seven providers, so that's two hundred and ten per hour. If you figure eight of five, it's going to look something like this. In the first three hours, there's going to be two hundred and ten per. From eleven to one, we're going to do a hundred per. That allows for lunch flexibility for those providers. For the three hours after that, from one o'clock to four o'clock, we're going to do another two-ten. So that's like fifteen hundred and sixty vaccinations. So for the other one hundred and thirteen vaccinations, that's, again, remember, that all sixteen of them are going to want the vaccination. So that's from four o'clock to five o'clock, so it'll be split, we're done and out of there at 5:05. I don't think that we're going to administer sixteen hundred. I, I think that there are going to be some people that decide that they don't want the vaccination, for whatever reason. But, I also think it's possible that, you know, we have to throw the, the private schools in, because what's going to happen, remember, I said this before, but I'll say again, is, is WECO is closing their shop for today, to do it. They didn't have to do it for Harrison County, they're not going to do it for Nichols County, but we all understand the, the size difference. They're shutting down the shop, and they're going to come to us that day. I, I think there's, there's no indication that it'll bleed over till Wednesday. The only, the only questionable factor that's out there is the distribution of the vaccine from the feds to the state of Kentucky, to Crystal Miller's hands on Monday. But so far, every time she's received a vaccine, she's received it on Monday, because that's the system that's set up. And there's no reason to believe that, that that's not going to happen. And if it doesn't happen, we'll know, and then that's another decision on what happens, you know, yes or no. I will also, to throw another stick in the mud, is that I'm sure that we have plenty of people in the community, to include several on our staff, that are thinking to themselves, and saying to themselves, and yelling, even though they're muted, how can you possibly consider going back to school when Scott County is in the red, the numbers are as high as they are, and the state instructional metric says you must have a more aggressive hybrid? I think in Scott County, the fact that we are trying to get our students, all of them that want to come back to school five days a week, I think that's a pretty aggressive hybrid. And I think that, quite honestly, I think the governor and Dr. Stack had their opportunity to enact their plan, and look what the numbers did. I'd like for Dr. Hug to have his opportunity to enact my plan, our plan, because our numbers were better. So, if you read the executive order, and I've read it twelve times, we are not, there's nothing in the letter of the law. The healthy work document talks about we need to keep our student desks six feet apart. But if you look at the very next statement, it says, but if you're not able to do that, do the best you can. There are districts across Kentucky that so far, when they've had a hybrid, and the reason why you have a hybrid is because you bring half the kids to school, so you think that that increases the likelihood that students are going to be more spread out. But the reality is, when you talk to those principals, and you talk to those superintendents and board members, what would happen is Stephanie was positive, so her kids went to Susan's class, so Susan didn't see that she had fifteen, she had thirty. So, I mean, it was no different than us coming back. Woodford County's in session today. All of their elementary kids are in session, and they're using a hybrid at the secondary school. Well, I mean, that's where I really started to think, hey, listen, if some of these districts are coming back hybrid, and are all on elementary, why don't we try to come back all in force? So, there's, there's plenty of ways to think about why we shouldn't be going back, but we are not violating any Kentucky Board of Education, Department of Education, or state laws. I talked with an attorney today. We're, we're one hundred percent fine to come back, but it's just important to know, and you are getting those feedback, and tonight to make the decision, somebody will say, here's what the metric says, you're, no, we're not violating. Following the metric is a recommendation. And, though, by the way, throw into that fact that we believe that, and I don't have any, maybe I have a little more insight to some political than the average bear, but really, I don't know many answers. We believe that February 2nd, right, that the general assembly is going to override any of the vetoes, so then that's going to make the whole accommodation piece, that's no longer an issue, the metric is an issue. So, again, those are just those things that are out there, not swaying you in one way or another, just throwing more things that you, you know, that we're always aware of when we make those decisions. And, you know, again, what everybody needs to understand is, the board is just publicly having this discussion. It's not like since March, you all have been in a vacuum and haven't been talked to about the decisions we made. You've had a bunch of emails, you've had a bunch of phone calls, you know, last time it was, hey, this kid, well, here's what we're thinking. Why don't you communicate with the board, call me if you've got any questions, and now, you know, this is, we talked to the two of you on Wednesday, and you got a bunch of information sent here on Friday, and here we are tonight, so.
So while we're thinking about the day, the other thing that you and I had talked about, Dr. Hug, and, is the, what happens if, for whatever reason, accommodations is, you know, in quarantine, whatever, that we have one school that does not have enough staff operating? Do we say that school goes a hundred percent virtual, or do we move the whole district back to virtual?
I don't care, go with me.
I know where I stand on this.
Well, if you're asking the board, I mean, I'm at the point now where, whatever we need to do to be sure that the most students possible are in school five days a week, or as long as possible, is what we need to do. I think we have five weeks of practice, five in the fall, and clearly we were able to keep numbers low, keep students and staff set. Governor took it out of our hands, and now back in our hands. And if we're frequent out of school, certainly it's keeping no one safe when we're in school. They're certainly not getting considered in education. They're not getting essential services. Life or not, public schools are not just a place where a child gets education. Emotional services, diagnostic services, nutritional services, social services, the list goes on and on. For as hard as our staff, and for as hard as our communities work, it is simply not a long-term solution. So, whatever we need to do, if it means that students show up a little bit late because we don't have enough bus drivers, and we've got to do some alternate routes, and so be it. If it means that we take an extra day off for our staff to get, the other half of our staff to get their vaccinations, it is still certainly a better option than continuing to keep our students and staff at home. And so, we had the five weeks of, of good, good run of keeping people safe. There are other districts that were already back without a vaccine. I'm not quite sure I understand why we feel like we have to make sure that we've got a hundred percent of our staff vaccinated. We frequently can do it safely when there wasn't even a vaccine available.
Yes.
I think a partial week is, is a good start for our young kids. I think Wednesday is our best test, and good information that they will be vaccinated. And if they're not, then we still start on Wednesday, and if the following Tuesday's what works best, then we're off the following Tuesday for our staff to get vaccinated, and we're right back there on Wednesday. I, I, I think we're maybe making this harder than it has to be, because if, if the main thing is the main thing, is getting these students and our staff back together five days a week. We know we can do it safely, it's just a matter of time. And I just can't see clear to not going back on Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 27th.
Yeah, and I, I think, for me, I think that if we are in a situation where for whatever reason, we can't have enough staff in a building, in a single building, that that building goes virtual.
I think that's why I'm interested in this. But, but those are decisions that come when...
The thought of the 27th, and no one said that, I know we're all tooting around it, and I don't want to say this, and, you know, I have a fear of, you know, not advocating for the vaccine, but, you know, sometimes you get vaccines and you feel probably the next day.
Sometimes.
And sometimes, you know, you just have an adverse reaction to it. So then, if we open up on the 27th, then we don't have enough people to maintain our building. So then if we open up on the twenty-seventh, then we don't have enough people to be in our buildings. Throw them out to close again, it's going to be another huge letdown too. And then everyone's scrambling for childcare when, you know, they've already dismissed their childcare and they've already, you know, made preparations to be in school and then, oh, well, we're not in school because we don't have enough subs. Because we, we don't, you know, we were always hearing that we don't have enough subs. So, you know, I feel like it's just proper protocol to let's vaccinate and then just, you know, come back when we have all of our ducks in row and have everybody ready to get.
Okay. I, I appreciate that Stephanie, but I think that statistically, the number, the possibility of, of, you know,
Overwhelming.
overwhelming number of employees having some, you know, an adverse reaction to the vaccine that would keep us from going, I, I statistically, I just can't get there in my head. I mean, I'm not a mathematician, but I just can't, I can't see that. But that would be, that there would be enough of those staff that would keep us from being, having to be in school on Wednesday.
In person. I haven't seen that data that there's, that's something to be expected, any different than flu vaccine. And certainly our staff gets flu vaccine on a regular basis every year. And it's usually on a record day or a, the career fair day and we're right like that in the state without any.
Well, I guess probably the biggest problem with this whole situation is you don't. I think that's the biggest problem with the whole situation with this virus is that you just, there's no, there's not a lot of that type of information out there. There's not much about it at all. So it's hard to predict what any of it's going to happen as you move forward through any of it. Uh, I think that all you could do is rely on Dr. Hudd and the staff to say, this is kind of where we see it at. And if this goes south, then we can fix it this way. Or this is kind of what we would recommend because of this, this, and this. Because knowing whether you're going to have a reaction or not, well, there's no, there's no data out there for it at all. So you're looking for something that doesn't exist and may not for another year. I guess that's where I end up at. But at the end of it, you still protect the ones that want to take care of your kids.
Right, I mean, to advocate, advocating on the staff side, I feel like, you know, just waiting those few extra days would be the appropriate thing to do, like, do I want to return five? Yes. Does my child want to go? Yes, he wanted to go five weeks ago. Um, I would take him tonight if I could. Like, if they would open their doors, he could sleep over. Um, his PlayStation is worn out. But, um, I just hate to start, maybe have to stop, start, stop. And then, you know, I feel like it would also give Dr. Hudd and his staff time to figure out logistics that might need to come.
Well, if there wasn't a chance of them changing, that would make it a little easier for the staff to figure all that out. You know, if there's still a chance of that changing. Of course, like you said earlier, that can change you up, up to the day that you go back. But whatever you can get in between that with him. And so.
So I, I'll go back and, and let's talk about the issue of, um, we've got a school or two that are already pretty close that, that may have to start early. Initially, you would think, because, because I think we've, we've done a pretty good job in Scott County where we've tried to do, we've tried to treat everybody as someone as we can. You might think initially, well, wait a minute, I've got a child in elementary school and a middle school and a high school. And if you're telling me that a middle school has to be all virtual, how on earth are we going to be able to do that as a family? Districts all across Kentucky, that's kind of been their norm. There's been lots of districts whose plan has always been to have elementary schools in person and secondaries on a hybrid, like I said before. So although that's not ideal, it goes back to what you were saying, Susan, about how that's the way that we could have more people in most of the time. Our team, I mean, ninety days ago, we discussed this issue. We thought about, okay, well, for snow days, we're always really consistent. Even if it's generally a northern elementary issue, the entire district has been shut down. But this is not a snow issue, this is a pandemic issue. So it seems to me right now that, uh, my team had kind of landed in the, we thought it would be the case where we may do one school at a time. Um, so I'm, I'm interested if the board has any feedback on that. And then one more thing that I would not want to let get away from us is the options to provide student transportation. Because we really think that that will be the biggest hurdle that we have to climb. Because that is the most critical role group to the whole process. We have enough teachers and we can cross load students in classrooms and some have bigger classrooms. Uh, Mitzi tells us that we're good on the food service side. Dwayne's telling us we're good on keeping the schools clean. But it's, it's that, it's those sixty-seven bus drivers and it's the limited subs and our, our mechanics or office staff. That's a finite group, but every one of those, every single day are held accountable. So I've got some options tonight, but, you know, one, you've got the full closure versus the partial closure. And then the transportation issue that I think are also things that you all need to be aware of. And I'd like to get your feedback so we can start the community thinking. Because, you know, although we're doing this tonight, it's not practical or expected that every time the decision needs to be made about school, that the board redevoting, we decide this is right. And I know that that's not what you're asking for either.
So what schools are looking at how to do that?
Royal Spring is one, I mean, based on the numbers we've gotten in that spreadsheet. So Royal Spring has got a considerable number.
With the, um?
Um, maybe Scott County has more?
Yeah, um, Elkhorn Crossing may have to do a, the, the unique nature of Elkhorn Crossing would say that there is the potential where a village could be virtual. Right, I mean, because every one of those, and then you think, okay, well, if I'm a great crossing in-person student in the morning and my village is virtual, well, what's going to happen in the afternoon? Well, you'll go, you'll go to ECS, you'll be supervised probably in the conference rooms and you can, you'll work virtually and the village won't be there as well. You know, because that's, you know, those, think of them almost as three-member schools that if somebody's not there and there's not a sub, then what are you going to do?
I, I said earlier that I think we're looking to keep back out of the community. First, my school might be virtual, send their ones in person. I think that as you and your team work through solutions for transportation, that certainly you're going to have to be creative. And that, um, it will be communicated hopefully in a way that you figure that out.
We already have solutions. I mean, you know, it's our job to think ahead time before.
So.
You want to hear two of them? So.
Solutions sound like we're good, y'all.
No, no, we, we are, we are. Okay, so one solution is bus driver X test positive. The students on that bus driver's route are unfairly inequitably challenged because it just so happens their bus driver got COVID. Same thing's going to happen for seven bus drivers across the district. And for as long as that bus driver is out with a positive or is out with a quarantine or maybe it's a bus driver that's on an accommodation, those students are always going to be the ones who are impacted. We can run a double route. Maybe they're getting picked up late, dropped off early, whatever, it's, it's a different route. Another solution says, you know, we're going to have about fourteen weeks left of school. Um, one way to look at it is in two seven-week chunks. And we can say, hey, community, here's a way that we can guarantee you six weeks of in-person. But you might have one week where we're not able to provide you bus transportation. What that says is seventy bus drivers for over seven weeks. Ten bus drivers in a week would now be floaters. They would help fill holes that exist in the crew. And these routes would not be provided transportation for that week. It's a plan that we could communicate weeks in advance. We would only have to enact it if that week. So let's just say, um, where you guys live, if you were week five of the schedule and COVID was down, positives down, quarantines were down, we had plenty of bus drivers. Hey, guess what? The routes A, B, C, D, E, and F, we're going to be able to provide transportation that week, you'll be good. But the next time it comes to your route, okay, it looks like we're going to have to implement a plan. Um, your child can, they can just check in virtually. They're going to get full, uh, they're going to get few adaptances, no penalty. Certainly they can be, get another ride to school, that's one way. So basically, those are these two ways to look at how we can take the bus driver staff that we have to utilize them. One way's probably a more equitable way than the other. Um, because, you know, some drivers are more susceptible to COVID than others, right? We've got twenty-five-year-old bus drivers in, sixty-five-year-old bus drivers. And, um, so either one of those ways, neither is good. Uh, but both are a solution to keep kids in school, which I think all of us here and present is what we're trying to find out. So we just may have to ask the community for a little bit of grace if we have to get there. Maybe we won't have to get there, but, uh, that's a way we could. And it's not something that we've not done before. You know, like, you know, I talked about, if we have a flood, okay, well, maybe there's a bus or two. We don't cancel the whole district school. Sorry, we can't provide transportation now. Uh, well, I know, right, so that's, that's what we did.
And that's exactly where we did it. So we didn't have to shut down the entire district because three roads flooded at one rate for twenty minutes.
So it's just getting the word out there. We hit great track record of being in front of these decisions. The community has a lot of notice. Um, you know, we'll know if we have to enact something like that. And maybe it's not a fourteen-week plan, maybe we try to do a ten-week plan and it's, uh, one set of ten weeks. And it's a smaller group that we don't provide.
Well, I appreciate it, if nobody's around this table survives that the effort's gone in where it needs to go to be prepared if we, a, a, as we have been planning, we're supposed to return on the twenty fifth. Um, I think that we're getting, we're, we're all up to a year on this, it's no longer a short-term problem. Um, there are going to be a lot of aspects of this that aren't going away anytime soon. And so I think we're having to look at, as much as it pains me to say the words, there is a new normal. It's for the foreseeable future. And it's not going to look like it used to look and it's not going to be easy. And it's probably not going to be pretty on a lot of days. But I, I think the easiest solution is just to say, we're not going back to school, all this is better. And I, I think that's not the best solution. And I know we all agree with that. So I, I just have a hard time understanding why we don't just, we're ready, solutions are there for problems that may come about. Confidence is high, our staff is going to be in person and have vaccines on Tuesday. And I just can't understand why we wouldn't want these students back in school as soon as we can get them out of school safely. And I would be glad to.
Yeah, let me be a stick in the mud. I think this is the last time I'm going to be a stick in the mud.
Yeah, it's still my life.
I'll mute myself. Yes, I proudly talk about how we had merely six weeks of in-person instruction and zero transmission. But you all know as a board, the governor made his announcement on that Wednesday. The press release was out and I think you guys had seen the draft. We were going to have to cancel anyway. We did not have the staff to safely operate in-person school. And the community incident rate was twenty-five point four. Uh, and again, I'm, I'm just saying that it's two and a half times that. Um, maybe it's two and a half times because we have the holiday stu, the holiday spikes and we're getting ready to come down a little bit. But, but I just, you know, the fact was, here was the community incident rate and we were already running double bus routes. We were already double covering classes. And I had reached out and said, we think the governor's may come make the call on Wednesday. If he does, that's fine, we'll support it. But if he doesn't make the call Thursday, we were announcing that we were going to have to be out, so.
So are you saying, let me just read between the lines here. So.
There is, no, there's nothing between the lines.
So as of, are, are you saying to us, let me ask this, your opinion? So are you saying to us, give us the rest of next week and go back to school on February first? Because of what the numbers are compared to what the numbers were at that point?
No, what I said is that, um, we did have great success when we were in. But when the community incident rate was at twenty-five, we did not have enough staff to operate safely due to positives and quarantines.
Right.
The vaccination does not change quarantines. Doesn't change quarantines, the rules are still going to be the same. And I'm only, I, and, and I've, you know, the numbers right now don't suggest to us that we're not able to go back to school. I'm just saying that it got bad when we were at twenty-five. But the virus is different then, right?
Well, I, I think what he's saying is.
I don't want to, I don't want to go on that road ghost trip of opening clusters.
Uh, for me, I, I think that's a possibility. I, I frankly, it is a possible.
But we'll never know until.
That's exactly right. And, and I think that it's, that for me, it is absolutely not a choice to say, we're not going back in person because there's a possibility we may have to go back to the country.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
No, I get that, and that's what I, that's, that's what I said to you.
Right, I think that's what he's saying.
You all are not hearing me say, wait to twenty-five. That's not what I said. I'm just saying that the, you know, we all want to go back, we want to go back five days. Our staff wants us back five days. What is even out of the staff's control is that their kid gets a positive or their spouse gets a positive, they work someplace, they've got a quarantine, that's out of their hand. And if that happens three or four, ten times in a school, now we don't, and, and you know, everybody understands that. I'm just, just throwing facts. There is no, there is no hidden meaning, there's no read between the lines, that's just.
I think though, that, you know, you have, you've had this time and like you said, you have a possible other plan for transportation that may help with not having that. And now, you know, we've at least talked about the possibility of not having to shut the entire district down in person just where your school has the, you know, not your staff. I think that's the two differences there. I would still love to go in person.
All right, good. What you're looking at, it seems to me, February first, January twenty-seven.
I'm moving at the beginning of Wednesday, January seventh, twenty-seven, Scott County School, it turns to a five-day, like, in-person instruction call.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
What's your thoughts?
I think that would be what happened.
January twenty-seven, five-day in-person.
I was going to vote for February second. Just to give our staff more time to prepare and get ready for students and for the vaccine to take hold. Not that I was opposed to funding instruction. But I, I think that's understood.
Well, the good thing about February second is ground all day, so you can remake it.
I will remake it all day when we go through this. Oh, my goodness. All right, any other comment from our board?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in. Aye. Adjourned.